Okay, same as the chapter meeting, Mr. Warren County Commissioner Wayne Wilcher Fazati, please, keep all cell phones off or on vibrate. Please remain standing for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance.
All right, at this time, I'd like to welcome everyone and I'd like to ask my pastor, Reverend Dr. Darrell Allen of Dayspring Community Church of God, to lead our invocation.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you tonight to say thank you. Thank you for being the great and mighty God that you are and for watching over us and bringing us to this place tonight. Thank you, oh God, that you did not create us to live in isolation, but you created us to live in community. And Lord, we thank you for this wonderful community of Warren County, Tennessee. And tonight, Father, as we gather here in this place, we thank you for these who are leaders in this community, in our community. And I pray, God, that you would just be with them tonight as they deliberate over the many different issues, Father, that concern our community. Lord, I pray that you would give them wisdom, give them guidance, give them direction, Father, to know what will be best done, that we be pleasing to you, as well as be in agreement and pleasing with the entire community. So, Lord, again, thank you, and we pray these things in your son's name. Amen.
Thank you, Brother Darrell. At this time, we have one of our own here that will be leading our pledge of allegiance, Jerry Phillips Stout. Served in the Tennessee National Guard from 1966 to 1972. He attended basic training in Fort Rag, North Carolina, with additional training at Fort Lee, Virginia, Fort Stewart, Georgia, Camp Shelby, Mississippi, and Fort Hood, Texas. He served two years with the helicopter unit in Nashville and four years in the motor pool unit in Coopville. Phillip was called to duty in 1968 for the civil rights protest in Nashville. He received an honorable discharge in 1972 with the rank of A5. Phillip has served his community in other capacities, such as being a longtime school system employee and in recent years, a county commissioner for the 6th District. At the time of his appointment, I was the only Republican on this commission. Phillip became the second one and has been a great person to work with, and I count him as a great friend. Thank you, Phillip, for your service to Warren County and to our great nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, at this time, I call the indoor. Please sit, please call the row. Here.
Carl D. Bowden.
Here.
Carl D. Bowden.
Here.
Charlie Brown.
Here.
David Dunlap.
Here.
Randy Easler.
Here.
David Evans.
Here.
Steve Lynn.
Here.
Stephen Helton.
Here.
Robert Hesse.
Here.
Brad Willis.
Here.
Lauren Lee.
Here.
Gary Martin.
Here.
Danny Owens.
Here.
Casey Owens.
Here.
Jerry Frader.
Here.
Kristi Ross.
Here.
Scott Rude.
Here.
Tom Sandy.
Here.
Tyler Martin.
Here.
Scott Stotts.
Here.
Dylan South.
Here.
Paul Taylor. Wayne Wilcher.
Here. Thank you, 23th President. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adopt the docket. Move to adopt. I have a motion from Commissioner Ruble.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Helton.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Stouts.
I have a motion to amend the agenda tonight to the reappointment of judicial commissioners.
Do you have a particular place you'd like to place that?
Mr. Chairman, I couldn't hear you. What?
Do you have a specific place to put that? Would 7A, would that work for you?
7A, you can. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion to amend the docket to add item 7A, reappointment of the judicial commissioners. Second, I missed two seconds. I heard it, but I didn't see. I'll second that. All right, Commissioner Brown, second to that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now back on the original motion to accept the docket. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If you would make notes, 7A, reappointment of judicial commissioners. Our next item is the reading of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We dismiss reading of minutes, second, and accept them as per se.
We have a motion from Commissioner Anglin. I believe we have a second from Commissioner Dunlap. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's all right. I'll second that.
I'm telling you, these plastic walls, it does something to your voice. Who seconded that motion? So I'll be after it. Commissioner Stouts, did you second it?
Yeah, David may have as well. David can second it.
We'll take it from Commissioner Dunlap. We'll take it from Commissioner Dunlap. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, public comment. I know not any that have been entered, and neither does Executive Haley, so we'll go straight into special recognition with Executive Haley.
Of course, it's all been alluded to, that we live in a very great community, that despite the challenges that we've had over the last year, we've had excellence across the board. And one of those young men that we would like to recognize tonight, and I'm not sure if he came in, he said he was coming, so not CJ Taylor. So, despite COVID, we've had excellence in our overall school programs, with our sports teams going to regionals and excelling across the board, as we said. And one of the recognitions that was received in the 6A TWS 08 conference was the recognition of Mr. Football, which went to CJ Taylor. And so, we did have a plaque for him. He promised me he was coming, but as Mr. Swallows says, he's always late, so he may come in at some particular point in time. Anotherly, I'd like to bring recognition to a hometown man that has excelled, not only in the medical field, but also in the military. And I don't think Dr. Kirby came in as well. He said he might not be able to make it. But in a recent ceremony, May 1st, at the Park Theater, Homer E. Kirby III Colonel and Medical Doctor was honored on his retirement. And so, he has served over 32 years in the military, the last in the reserves in Nashville, and one of the chief medical officers. So, we'd like to also recognize Dr. Kirby for his military service to our country. The next one brings great pride to me. Most of you knew that when this administration took office, when we were sworn in in September of 18, our jails faced a lot of challenges. You know, the course of the last two and a half, almost three years, by rolling up their sleeves and working at this commission and committee, but in particular, Sheriff Tommy Myers and his administration, we were able to turn the jail around, completely certified and code compliant. We still got projects going on and more programs to initiate, and we get our program space in place. So, I'd like to recognize tonight, Sheriff Tommy Myers.
Thank you all. I will take this a moment, because all right, Mr. Haley said most of it. You know, as you know, since 2018, we have, since 2018, we have had a lot of challenges. And that's not even to mention COVID coming along. But we're still in the struggle and fighting through everything. A lot of things I do here, across the state of Tennessee, from other sheriffs, other DAs, officers across our great state, is the great things that they're hearing about Warren County. And that makes me proud. So, I just want you to know that. I get asked that all the time, I promise you. Our jail has come a long way, our sheriff's department's come a long way, and we also be proud of that. I am. It's your jail, it's your sheriff's department, and this is our community. And I will do everything I can to keep us moving forward. We're not there yet, but we're getting there. Thank you all very much.
Of course, when COVID hit, our community had many challenges, and we had to rise to the occasion and to adapt and adjust. We had to mitigate and contain what was a serious health threat, 100-year pandemic that retaliated across our nation, across our community, with upwards of over 80 people dying of the disease. President Trump brought with the vaccines to life with warp speed to bring those vaccines available to the public. And so, the community effort through the Health Department and our local pharmacies was exceptional, not only just in the testing, but when the vaccines rolled out, to be able to get the vaccines in as many arms as possible. And that's what's going to turn things around and bring us back to normal. And so, one pharmacy in particular stepped forward. We put the call out to try to partner with some pharmacies to help alleviate some of the crisis, really at the Health Department, to accommodate as many needs as they possibly could with testing, plus their regular services, plus the vaccinations with limited staff. And so, Grace Pharmacy paid forward and offered to do and assist the community. And so, they sponsored clinics, mobile clinics, down to places of business, and helped get those shots in the arms. So, I'd like to recognize tonight, Grace Pharmacy.
I am Chad Graves, and this is lovely, we are England Graves, pharmacist at Graves Family Pharmacy. And we just wanted to say thank you guys, all of you guys, for supporting us and allowing us to go out and do these clinics, because we always wanted to start a pharmacy. This is not exactly how we anticipated starting a pharmacy, just hitting the ground, running with COVID clinics. But today, we've done 27 COVID clinics in the three months that we've been open. And we actually got a call that we were going to receive COVID vaccine before we even had our certificate of occupancy in our new space. So, Emily said, well, we'll just do it in the parking lot. So, that's sort of how we got started, and we have, you know, been running ever since. So, we've given 4,321 COVID shots today, and we are still giving them every single day. So, for us to get back to normal, which feels like we're getting pretty close, we appreciate you guys. And I also wanted to say special thank you to Lana Whitlock, who was instrumental in helping us get started, organize, and volunteer many, many hours. And County Executive Haley, thank you as well, because without all of you guys and the County Executive, I feel like we've been able to vaccinate more people than we would have without. So, thank you guys very much.
Of course, all of our pharmacies stepped up, but Graves went the extra mile in accommodating these mobile clinics across the community. The next one is a good friend of mine, an outstanding volunteer here across the community, of she and her husband. And so, I would like to recognize Missy Griffith as a 2021 Herald of Love Outstanding Community Award. Her service through Mottlo and to our community, it's never been won by a community college applicant before. And so, we would like to recognize Missy Griffith on her efforts across the community and serving the public and our citizens mostly in need. So, thank you very much.
Ironically, as an instructor at Mottlo, this is the first time I have been in front of a crowd half this large in over two years. So, I just wanted to say thank you so much. By recognizing this award, you are taking the time to recognize the importance of higher education, specifically Mottlo College, and how it helps individuals such as myself. I also want to say thank you so much to Executive Haley for taking the time to recognize me as well, and for all of his mentorship and leadership that he continues to give to our community. So, thank you.
Of course, this is something that's near and dear to my heart. As a career educator, I believe investing in education is the best future we have. The more kids that we invest in, the fewer jail cells we have to build. And so, one of the outstanding programs that has been recognized recently by the Tennessee Pathways was our CTE classes at the high school. They continue to excel in the leadership of Tracy Roslinger and the principal there, and Grant Swallows, and our school board. The sky's the limit on where we're going with these programs moving forward with more grants coming. So, tonight, I would like to recognize Tracy Roslinger, and she's something, got a little something prepared as well, our CTE program and the pathways recognition.
I'm here to give a packet of information tonight, to explain the pathways process to you. But I just want to read a few statements from the Tennessee Department of Education's Pathways Information. The Tennessee Pathway Certification sets clear expectations for alignment, advisement, and partnerships that define strong education for career pathways. What this does, it creates an alignment between K-12, post-secondary, and employers, so that students have a clear and guided pathway to seamlessly into the workforce. It focuses on three primary informations. First is the career and college advisement through K-12, rigorous early post-secondary and work-based learning, and seamless vertical alignment between K-12, post-secondary, and career opportunities, as well as effective partnerships among school districts, higher education institutions, employers, and community. I would like to thank everybody in our community. We have excellent post-secondary partners, school system partners, community partners, industry partners. Basically, we have a great working team. And the reason we're so successful is the team works together. So, I would like to thank you for honoring CTE tonight. Yes. And we have with us tonight an excellent, one of our excellence figures in our machine tool technology, Miss Emily Boulon. And we'd like to recognize her.
I'm Emily Boulon, and this class has greatly helped me figure out what I want to do in my life. And I plan on going to T cap and going on and getting the degree in the machine tool technology field. And I've already, yes, Randy, I'm going to come see you. But this is a great field, and I've already started working under triple C machining this year. And I believe this is a great field, and Dwayne Dishman back there is doing wonderful teaching the class. Thank you all for this award.
If there's any other CTE, or Mr. Dishman, if you'd like to stand up, that's here tonight and come up here and say, come up and say something.
I would like to, also, you know, Emily's been a blessing in the past, maybe my, I wouldn't call it a job, but teaching her a lot easier. She's very easy. She soaks it up, and it's taught me a few things, to be honest. But anyway, she's a very young lady. And also, I'd like to thank Tracy. For Tracy in the high school, and Mr. Swallows, and we got T cap people here also tonight, if it wasn't them together, this program wouldn't be possible. So, this went together real well, and Randy also.
Let them know that this is our gift grant.
Yeah, this is a million dollar gift grant that you got that put all this equipment at the high school. So, we're still moving stuff in. Not done yet, but it is also appreciated. All the kids are very glad we have the new machines, and it's working out very well. I won't keep you any more of your time, but just thank you for this opportunity.
I thought Mary Walker was going to be here tonight as well. But, you know, one of the premier events is the sunrises, shows how the community can come together and support a program that's always in need, and that's our Bills on Wheels program. But this year, after last year's hiatus, back to the strip and full speed ahead. And so, we're able to raise over $60,000 for the feeding program of Bills on Wheels. So, I'd like to recognize Mary Walker, Chris Terry, their whole staff that put together this event each and every year, and for their exceptional community involvement toward worthy cause. So, I want to thank Mary Walker and her staff for doing that. And then, the last thing, my announcements, I did do a proclamation. I was asked to do so. It was involved in the packet, but I'll go ahead and read it as well. Says, "Whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families today is fundamental, is a fundamental of the Warren County government. And whereas the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, young adults, and families places on our community a critical responsibility to act. And whereas it is appropriate that the day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts for children's mental health and well-being. And whereas Tennessee Voices, through its unique approach to serving children and adolescents, is effectively caring for the mental health needs of children, youth, young adults, and families across our community. Now therefore, being resolved, I, Penexeth and Jimmy Haley, hereby proclaim May 7, 2020, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day in the area of Warren County and across our community, and our citizens, and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs, to unite on that day and every day in observance of such exercises, as will acquaint the people of the area, the middle of Warren County, with the fundamental necessity of year-round programs for children, youth, and young adults who face mental health, mental health needs, along with their families." So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is the elected official department report, County Executive Report, Detective Haley.
I think you all got a copy of reports, so if there's any questions, you can call my office or email me. So, I've got a couple of updates at the end of our announcements to give about some critical things, but I'll do that in our announcement.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve from Commissioner Lee, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, Finance Department report, Director.
Thank you, Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, you have my report. If you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer it this time.
Move to adopt. A motion from Commissioner Ruble, second from Commissioner Helton. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item is Highway Department Court report, Superintendent Glenn.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court, you have my report. If there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
We have a motion from Commissioner Frader, a second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. Next is our Sanitation Department Court report, Director Josh Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the court. You have my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them at this time.
Move to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stouts, a second from Commissioner Stout. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
We had an issue at our school with cardboard, and I got educated by Mr. Josh. And I want him to educate people because our cardboard was dirty. I didn't understand what dirty meant on cardboard, but that means anything you leave inside of, you know, those plastic peanuts or whatever. And I appreciate Josh striking me out on that and helping us at our school. But that needs to be known countywide, and I wish we would get that out, because that causes us problems when selling our cardboard. So, we need to go back and tell people that uses our convenience centers, that if you have what we call dirty cardboard, papers inside, put that in the dumpster. Put your cardboard in the right receptacle. Am I saying it correctly, Josh?
Yes, sir. Just sort your cardboard, anything in the cardboard, TV boxes, styrofoam, peanut shells, whatever it is, styrofoam, take it out, fill it with trash. And we recycle our cardboard. We get around $30 a ton for our cardboard, so that's money coming back into the county.
And no pizza boxes?
Yeah, no pizza boxes. A lot of pizza boxes has got the very bottom that soaks up the grease. If they'll take that out, we can take the pizza boxes, but most of the time, nobody takes that out. But we can't take pizza boxes as long as you take out the bottom that absorbs the grease. But we see a lot of contamination in the cardboard, and we try to educate. We've been on the television. We try to, my satellite operators really push it, just sort your materials. But that's the biggest thing, because that's money coming back into the county sign. So, my, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thanks. Next is the Warren County Sheriff's Department, First Court report, Sheriff Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen of the court, you should have copied my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to kind of answer them.
I believe we have a motion from Commissioner Lee, second from Commissioner Bell. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
I'm just curious what our current population is at the jail right now.
It's right at 180.
You break that down, female, male?
We have 35, 40 females and the rest are men.
All right, no further questions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Sheriff Myers. Next is Warren County Schools Court report, Director Swallows.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Honorable county commissioners, thank you for being here. I did submit a report, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about that.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Stout, second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion?
I'd like to ask Mr. Swallows.
Commissioner Bell.
We do add a couple of comments on the status of the home harmless field and about the change of the schedules of the school board meetings.
Sure. The whole harmless field did pass, and we're thankful for that. You might notice I have a lot more gray hair than I did when I started this job, but then of the day, we are thankful that that did pass for one year. And so, we will be able to be funded at the same level next year that we were the year prior. Every school system, with the exception of maybe two or three, I believe their ADM, average daily membership, went down this year because of COVID. But we are fortunate to be able to do that. And the school board, just to speak to your question, the school board did vote to move to the fourth Monday of every month. So, that will begin in June. We will need on Mondays as opposed to Thursday.
Thank you. No other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, at this time, we'll go into committee reports. First is Budget and Finance, Commissioner Ruble.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we are happy to announce that we are nearing the end of the budget review process. Hopefully, next Monday or Tuesday night, we will complete that. I don't know if we're going to be able to cover races yet, but we will soon. But everything is in, except a couple of budgets, and as soon as they're in, we will complete the review process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Building Grounds, Carl E. Bowden. Commissioner Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Billy Brown has done the report.
Thank you. Next, Economic and Agricultural Development, Commissioner Carl D. Bowden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this point, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. Next is Education Committee, Commissioner Brown.
At this time, we have nothing to add to Mr. Swallows' report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Financial Management, Executive Haley.
Mr. Ruble, the report will be scheduling meetings in conjunction with Budget and Finance coming up probably within the next week. So, just look for that, please.
Thank you. As far as health and welfare, we have nothing to report at this time either. Highway and Bridge, Commissioner Frader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Really don't have anything to report, but we are gonna meet tomorrow and discuss our budget at four o'clock at the Highway Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Let's Live Committee, Commissioner Brown.
At this time, we have nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you. Policy and Personnel, Commissioner Savage.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be calling a meeting probably in the next week or so, everybody looking at your emails. And I'll let you know if it's someone that doesn't get an email, I'll try to call everybody and let them know we've got a thing we need to talk about next month. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next is Safety Committee, Commissioner Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this time, Safety has nothing to report, but I would like for our court to keep in your prayers Tristan Denny's wife had a successful heart transplant yesterday and just keep that in for good, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is County Corrections Partnership, Commissioner Stow.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. County Corrections has nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Thank you. And last but not least, Rediserving Committee, Commissioner England.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, Rediserving has nothing to report.
Thank you. With no old business, we'll go into new business. Item number one is Resolution Number Four Dash Twenty Twenty-One, Federal Programs Budget Resolution. Director Cottin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is the resolution we pass each year to allow the school board to manage the federal programs budget for the school system.
Motion to adopt.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell, a second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call roll please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frader?
Yes.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartan?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes. Motion passes, twenty-three yes. Next item is number two, Granicus Contract Three-Year Agreement with Granicus Software.
Yes, this is a three-year contract with Granicus to allow us to sign an agreement for the longer term in order to save, to get better pricing model for the three years. It says across the multiple years we need to pay to get approved.
Motion to adopt. We have a motion from Commissioner Hilton, we have a second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That's what else? Do we need to? All right, we'll call roll. I apologize.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frader?
Yes.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartan?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
And one more change of vote, twenty-three yes.
Motion passes, twenty-three yes, thank you, Ms. Scott. Next item is number three, Amendment GF-FY Twenty Twenty-One Dash Twenty, Reallocate Funds Within Other Administration of Justice. Director Cottin.
This is a question amendment for the Aid and Aid Recovery Program to reallocate some funding from their evaluation in order to cover some increased rental costs, do some later travel, and purchase some additional supplies here at the end of this year.
Motion to adopt. We have a motion from Commissioner Hilton, second. Commissioner Hennessy, was that you?
No, sir.
That was me, yes.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Hilton, second to that. Anyone want to speak to that motion? Call roll please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frader?
Yes.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartan?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
And one more change of vote, twenty-three yes.
Motion passes, twenty-three yes. Item number four, Amendment GP-FY Twenty Twenty-One Dash Seven. Director Cottin.
Yes, this is an amendment for the general public school system to do several things all at once. First off is you set up thirty-one thousand dollar UTRUS grant that was donated to the schools on behalf of private individuals that is going into seven one one five hundred five ninety-nine. There is eight thousand dollars transferred in fuel to cover, oh, excuse me, in contract services with Durham to cover fuel prices here in the last part of the year. And then, seven hundred thirty-two thousand dollars to set up the payroll line items as well as the supplies needed for the summer learning grant.
We have a motion from Commissioner Stow, second. We have a second from Commissioner Hennessy. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, call roll please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frader?
Yes.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartan?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
And one more change of vote, twenty-three yes.
Motion passes, twenty-three yes. Next is item number five, Amendment GP-FY Twenty Twenty-One Dash Eight. Director Cottin.
This is to set up. Director Swallows.
Director Swallows, I'm sorry.
I thought it might be easier for me to explain this. This is money coming from the State Department for our teachers. This is actually extra duties, and I think this is very important that we highlight this. They chose Warren County and our teachers to record videos that will actually be uploaded to the State Department, and they will be on the State Department website for remote learning all over the state. And so, basically, this is money coming straight from the Department of Education that we are funneling out to those teachers that participated in this program. So, we're getting from them, we just gotta go and salary line at them, but I wanted to speak to it because you should be proud of your teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Frader, we have a second from Commissioner Glenn. Anyone want to speak to that? If not, call roll please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Stephen Hilton?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frader?
Yes.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes. Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
And one more change of vote, twenty-three yes.
Motion passes, twenty-three yes. Item number six, Amendment SF-FY Twenty Twenty-One Dash Two, Set Up and Appropriate Sale of Equipment to Purchase Additional Equipment.
Yes. The Director of Sanitation surplused a significant amount of equipment this year. We sold it at auction. It's his wishes to be able to spend the money that he made on sell that equipment to purchase additional equipment out of this fiscal year's budget.
Mr. Chairman, a question.
Yes, Commissioner Frader.
How much money are we talking about?
Thirty-three, thirty-two thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and fifty-six cents.
Oh, what kind of equipment are we purchasing?
Sanitation records here. At last we spoke, he hadn't made a final decision.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, we're looking to purchase either a pickup truck for maintenance for convenience centers or some roll-off bins. I ain't even lined up yet, but one of them too.
Move to adopt. We have a motion from Commissioner Ruble, a second from Commissioner Brown. Thank you. Director Ross. Anyone else want to speak to that motion? Call roll please, Lisa.
Michael Bell?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carl E. Bolden?
Yes.
Carly Brown?
Yes.
David Dunlap?
Yes.
Randy England?
Yes.
Deborah Evans?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Steve Quinn?
Yes.
Robert Hennessy?
Yes.
Brad Hillis?
Yes.
Ron Lee?
Yes.
Gary Martin?
Yes.
Daniel Owens?
Yes.
Casey Owens?
Yes.
Gary Frader?
Yes.
Kristi Ross?
Yes.
Scott Ruble?
Yes.
Tommy Savage?
Yes.
Tyrone Spartan?
Yes.
Joseph Stotts?
Yes.
Philip Stout?
Yes.
Clay Wilcher?
Yes.
And one more change of vote, twenty-three yes.
Motion passes, twenty-three yes. Next is item number seven, Approve Fair Board Appointments.
Seven A, you got to do seven A.
Well, typically, I'll do seven A after seven, but. All right. Motion to approve seven. Motion to approve the Fair Board members. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Hilton, we have a second from Commissioner England.
I would like to speak to this motion.
All right, Commissioner Hilton.
These three names, I don't want them to just go lightly through our docket because these three names have done a lot for our community. Specifically, David and Ione King. If you don't know who these individuals, they do a lot for our community. They're involved with the senior citizen, they're involved with all of the different communities. Obviously, COVID has sort of put them, you know, at home a little bit because of the fear of getting sick. But David and Ione are responsible for the O'Neil Cabin, which is right there in the village by the office, and they work there tirelessly throughout the year to keep that going, and it's not just show up the week of the fair. Trent Frader's a sound guy. He's been donating his time and his equipment throughout the years, and it's much recognition here for these three individuals that's been a great part of putting on a great fair. So, we wanted to recognize them.
Thank you, I'm glad you mentioned them, Trent Frader, David, and Ione King. Is anyone else want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Next is item seven A, Reappointment of the Judicial Commissioners.
Commissioner Savage. Each year, the judicial commissioners are sworn in, and those that are on our list are David Williams, Ken Mulkin, Walker McLaren, Kevin Deason, Matt Hill, Susan Dubby, and Lady Martin. If any of these, I don't think any of them are present tonight, but they work, some of them work, you know, second, third shift, and they do a good job. I remember a few years ago, it was every other month, we were running ads, we were looking at resumes. There was somebody quitting, and we were having them do interviews, and when we changed the system to, we got a supervisor, and we went to three shifts. We had three full-time, and then we used our part-time to take them slack. We've not had a turnover in some work, I think David said it was about three and a half years. And tack on wood, yes. But they're doing a good job, and somewhere down the road, I know that there might be some retired or something, but they're doing a good job. They're not perfect, they're human, but we'll be getting in touch with each one of them and let them come by Ms. Scott's office and get sworn in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you want to put that in form of a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to put that in form of a motion, I saw it moving.
All right, we have a motion, Mr. Savage, we have a second from Commissioner Hilton. Anyone else want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next is item number eight, Approval of Notaries, Ms. Scott.
This is the list for the notaries.
This is the list for the notaries. Cynthia Joyce Campbell, Kimberly Bellton, Victoria Herman, Justin C. Walling, David Houston Wood, Marcy Swann, Kristi Toward, Tony N. Do Scott, Joey Hartman, Thomas L. Foster, Melinda Inbergs, Sheila D. Scott, Cameron Rowland, Patricia M. Phyllis, Sheila Butcher, Patson B. Black, Con Turner, and Darryl Paymore.
Motion approved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bell.
Second.
And a second from Commissioner Ross. Anyone want to speak to that motion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, next, uh, we will be going into our special presentation.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Pratt, yes. Mr. Scott Gibson.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Ruble.
Would you suspend the rules and the four-minute deadline to allow Ms. Gibson to speak?
That, that's a good suggestion.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, Mayor Haley asked me to come down tonight to, uh, talk about the county, where you stand, uh, let y'all ask questions of me, and go over the county's debt, and just give a brief overview of that. For those who do not know, I work for the County Securities, we are the county's financial advisor. Uh, we have been helping the county finance school projects and other capital improvements for over, oh, thirty years now, and I have been doing this, uh, over, well, over twenty-five myself, so, um, I do have a good knowledge, history, uh, as some of the county commissioners here do for the last couple decades of how the county has progressed and where we are today. I did hand out a few items today. Uh, first, I'd like to go over, just give you a brief overview. There's a one-page handout, on one side it has the fund balances for the county, and so you can see a five-year history of those fund balances, where you stand, uh, through June thirty, two thousand twenty, and the flip side of it has the, uh, financials for the general fund, which obviously is your main fund that the county operates out of, showing the revenue and expenses and fund balances for that. The reason I wanted to hand this out is, uh, it's a real simple graph, and you can go back and look at the general fund, five point three million in two thousand sixteen, uh, up to five point seven million in two thousand twenty. Now, all that is not restricted, unrestricted dollars, there are some, uh, restricted dollars in those, uh, when that fund balance is calculated, so, uh, whether it's restricted or encumbered or whatever, you can't spend all that money, but there is a, a good proportion of that was unrestricted. Um, and then I wanted you to also focus on the general debt service fund. The general debt service fund, obviously, where you pay your debt out of, uh, eight point nine million and some change in two thousand sixteen, and as of two thousand twenty, it was up to nine point eight million, and based on my conversations with Justin, I think that fund's actually going end of the year maybe with, uh, maybe a small surplus, so that number should go up some. I will tell you though, if you go back, um, about ten years ago, that fund balance and that fund was actually a little bit higher than that, so you were approaching about twelve million dollars at one point. Now, did spend it down a little bit, and it's starting to go back up. Uh, but, that is not to say the county is in worse shape today, because if you go back and look at your general fund at the same time about a decade ago, that number was in about the two million dollar range, two and a half million. And so, um, I think realistically, if you ask me today, you know, how is Warren County? Uh, if you go back and just look at the financials, where you are today, you're probably, um, one of the strongest times that you've ever been in, so I think you are on a really good path. Obviously, a few years ago, uh, we were talking about use of fund balances and a few things, I was here, making a couple presentations, um, the county did adjust its revenues, and because of that, you are stronger today, and you should be applauded for what you did. You were on a path that was not sustainable, you were on a path now that is sustainable, I think. Uh, I think you just need to keep doing what you're doing. Um, you have a, I also handed out, and I'm gonna go over the debt in just a minute, the S and P rating report, this is what we, uh, S and P is one of the rating agencies we use when we do that. You're rated A-plus, uh, you've been rated A-plus for a long time, there's some pros and cons in there that you can read. Um, you are checking most of the boxes for the good stuff, uh, you do have a concentration of, uh, S and P considers Warren County's economy kind of weak, uh, the reason for that is, uh, not just, there's really nothing you can do to a large extent about that, it's out of your control. One, the wealth indices in Warren County are a little bit lower than compared to the nation, and compared to, for example, some of the metropolitan counties, so like Williamson County, uh, Rutherford County, some of those counties, on average, have higher wealth indices than Warren County, I think everyone here, you know, realizes that, and so that's a, a kind of a drag. And two, you have, uh, a couple of large employers here, they're nice employers to have here, but from a rating agency perspective, they consider that a, a double-edged sword, so it's great, but their, their concern from a ratings perspective is, what if one of those plants goes down? And if one of them blows down, that makes a pretty big impact on your economy versus having, um, you know, if you have one employer with a thousand employees and they shut down, you lose a thousand employees overnight. The rating agencies would prefer that you have twenty employers and fifty people leave, so if you lose one, you only have fifty people to worry about, not a thousand. And so that double-edged sword, uh, is what they're talking about, and so they kind of hold you back for that. I wanted to bring up that, uh, S and P report about the A-plus, like I said, your, your finances are strong, your management is strong, you're doing a good job, this commission does a good job, Mayor Haley does a good job, I think you're on a sustainable path, but if you want to get to the next level, um, I just want to, from my experience, throw out a couple ideas. One, like I said, keep doing what you're doing. Keep the general fund, fund balance at least standing where it is, if not, try to grow it a little bit every year. The debt service fund's in good shape, just keep the revenue coming in, keep paying the debt down, and we'll go over that in just a second. And then the third thing I wanted to mention, which y'all have not done historically, but something you may want to consider at some point in the future, is to, uh, start like a capital projects fund. And a capital projects fund would be a, a new fund that you could set up, uh, obviously all fund capital from town to town, where it's buying a new truck, or a roll-off, or the sanitation department, from the stuff they sold, or whatever, obviously that's one-time money that you're putting out. And so what I am talking about is trying to find what's a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand bucks a year to put into this fund that you start building on, so that you can pay for roofs, or HVACs, or small repairs here or there, uh, so that you don't have to the fund balance or something like that. So that would be kind of over and above what you normally do. Like I said, start small, but over time, maybe you can build that up over time. Uh, there are a few counties out there that have started to move to that, and it is, you don't think it, you know, you think, well, if we only put a couple hundred thousand in, that just doesn't really get us very far, but if you do that for a decade, that's two million bucks. Two million bucks pays for a lot of HVACs and roof replacements and stuff, and all that stuff is, um, if you can take care of the small stuff like that and do it over time, then you only have to call me to come down here to help y'all finance something when you want to build ten million dollars or twenty million dollars for a school, or, or something like that, so. Are you ever gonna maybe get past, you know, set up where you can pay cash for a school? I'm not sure that you're ever gonna get there. Um, if you want to, politically, you could, probably, but, you know, we, I mean, there's a fine balance between, uh, where your tax rate is, where, you know, what kind of, uh, burden, tax burden you want to put on your citizens here, and whether you finance stuff or not. So there's a few counties out there that have higher tax burdens than you have, but they also finance their debt shorter, they try to pay cash for a lot of stuff, but the trade-off is they have a higher tax rate. You have a very attractive tax rate, it's one of the lower in the state, it is something this county commissioners product itself on, but I just caution that, um, we're not getting ourselves in a situation where we put stuff off just because we want to maintain the tax rate low. Let's think, there's gotta be a, a nice balance, you know, we do have to fund new roofs and HVACs over time, uh, and to the extent you can do that with cash and not have to borrow the money, that's a good thing, uh, just like you do with your home and stuff, you, you know, people know that you might replace your roof on your house, and you start saving up money, or if you know your HVAC system's gonna go out in a year or two, you start thinking about trying to save some money, so you don't have to go to the bank and get a loan to replace your air conditioning when it does go out, and kind of the same puppet for the county. So, that's kind of just an overview, like I said, I think y'all are in great shape. I do work all over the state of Tennessee, um, I work with some counties that are a little bit stronger than Warren County, they're closer to, a lot of them are closer to the metropolitan areas, where there's more economic diversity, uh, and I do work in several of the counties that are distressed counties throughout the state, uh, and if you want some stories about how bad things are, I can give you some examples that make Warren County look like they're at the top of the, of the pyramid compared to some of the other counties I work in, so. Uh, and there's nothing against those counties, they try to do their best, uh, most of them are, are fairly rural, and, uh, it's just hard. As an example, I do work in Lake County, Tennessee, far upper western Tennessee, where Real Foot Lake is. Just to give you a comparison, um, they're actually on, doing a little bit better than that, but a penny only brings in about eighty-five hundred dollars. So that is county-wide, and so a sheriff cruiser costs just as much in Lake County as it does in Warren County. Your penny can pay for a sheriff cruiser, it takes about three or four pennies on their tax rate just to pay for a sheriff cruiser, as an example. So, the, the numbers get hard when it's only eighty-five hundred dollars per penny, and I just, I just throw that out to, to give you an example of what is out there in the state of Tennessee. The last book I wanted to go over, uh, is the summary debt book, and so, it's several pages here, we're gonna flip through it real fast, there's a graph at the end that, that shows something. So this is all the county's outstanding debt. Uh, on page one is the two thousand ten bonds that were done for the, uh, school construction. On that, uh, on the heading, I've actually put, uh, original true interest cost approximately zero percent. Uh, that's on every one of the pieces of debt, so you can see where we started, uh, as far as interest rates are concerned. That two thousand ten bond was a special program that the Fed set up right after the, uh, Great Recession that we had, uh, and so you, you get a, you pay interest on that, but you get a rebate every year that goes back into the general debt service fund and offset that cost, so that brings that cost of that particular loan pretty much to zero. Uh, the federal government did cut the rebate a few years, or, right after the program started, they take a little bit off the top, so that's why I put it approximately zero. It's not quite zero, but the rate is still really, really good, so that loan pays off approximately two thousand twenty-eight. On page two was the two thousand eighteen bonds we did, uh, that was all new money. This is your highest cost of funds, at, uh, three point two six seven zero was the original true interest cost. Those bonds, also in the upper right corner of that page, that's on page two, uh, are callable on six-one of two thousand twenty-four. And what that means is, uh, in two thousand twenty-four, we would have the opportunity to come back, and if interest rates are, uh, low like they are today, or, or still just, you know, fairly attractive, we may have an opportunity to refinance that debt and save money. And so when you sell the municipal bonds, like we were talking about, uh, typically, there is a period before you can refinance them again. The industry standard is ten years, but we did, obviously in eighteen, you could do a twenty-four call, it's a six-year call, so we put a shorter call on it to give you an opportunity to refinance it, that is a soon, uh, earlier date, but obviously we're about three years away before we can look at that and realistically figure out where we are. Uh, three point two six is not a bad rate, but obviously we may be able to do something better in the future if the rates are. Uh, page three was the two thousand nineteen A bonds, obviously this was some of the ongoing school ESG work that y'all did a couple of years ago with all the roofs and renovation and energy savings projects. Uh, two thousand nineteen A was done, that was at three point one zero, those bonds are callable in two thousand twenty-six. On page four, there was another issue done in two thousand nineteen, uh, that was twelve point eight million, also callable in two thousand twenty-six. Rates had come down by the time we got to it, two point five-three were the rates. Also as part of that issue, uh, the bigger principal payments, which is the second column, that was, uh, we refinanced some debt as part of this issue, so it was new money and refinancing, we saved about three hundred and eighty thousand bucks for those who don't remember on that issue when we refinanced it, and so we did save some money at the time, uh, we're still paying on that. And then two thousand nineteen C bonds on page five, that was the, uh, ESG project for the county, two point four A, also callable in twenty-six. So in two thousand twenty-six, five years from now, all three of those issues, if rates are low, we would have the opportunity to maybe look at, refinance, and see if we could save some money. Uh, page six is the, uh, two million dollars that the school got, uh, as part of their ESG project. Uh, that is a zero percent interest rate, but there is an annual fee that the county for, uh, electric utility is charging. That loan is prepayable at any time, the fee is very reasonable, uh, considering how much money it is, and that loan, like I said, the last couple of years, if you want to prepay it, you can, if you want to, if you're paying the fee, that is not a problem. And then page seven is the last piece of debt that is outstanding, uh, that was from last year, uh, two thousand twenty, we refinanced a piece of debt. Uh, it was a, the debt we actually refinanced was a little above two percent, we managed to cut the rate down to one. We didn't save much, but it was about ten thousand bucks a year, so it was fifty thousand dollar savings, so, um, we tried to squeeze out as much as we can to try to, you know, help the county. Page eight of this analysis, I just outlined the total principal and interest payments, uh, going forward, but the best thing on page nine is your graph, and so you can kind of basically see, it's a lot easier just looking at the graph to see where you are. Uh, I will tell you that the two thousand twenty-two payment, it looks, it looks like a twenty-third, uh, interest, you know, by this graph that you're gonna pick up some savings, but, uh, actually if you go back and look at this year versus the twenty-two on this graph, this payment in twenty-two is about four hundred thousand dollars higher than it was this year, three hundred and fifty or something, so we have a little bit spike here that's gonna happen this upcoming year, so really, um, this, this drop-off here is kind of imaginary, because it's a one-time spike there that's kind of skewing the numbers, so we will come, your revenue should, you might be short this coming year, uh, might use a little fund balance, we always, uh, had, that was because of a state law issue when we sold the debt several years ago, and we had to deal with that. You'll come back to your revenue expenditure, it should be close to four million when it's all said and done, and then that debt does drop off in two thousand, uh, starting in two thousand twenty-six, so, uh, you should have, if you can keep doing what you're doing, uh, four more years, that four more years, that debt is gonna fall off some, so it should free up some revenue in that fund, and once again, we can figure out where, you know, where your capital needs are at the time. Uh, however, you know, I think hopefully we'll keep our previous costs and use the county commission. Uh, the school's just got a nice influx of federal dollars, they're gonna be able to spend some of that probably on some of their maintenance issues that may be out there. Uh, and I say that, obviously you don't have to make toys, but, uh, a lot of school systems across the state I'm working with and talking to are, are using their federal dollars coming in, going the, uh, the stimulus bill, the relief bill, uh, to, you know, check several boxes of stuff that needs to be done, and the good thing about that is, if they're able to do that, that keeps the pressure off you to fund those things over the next couple of years. That's not to say that they won't be back to ask for something at some point, but if they can get a couple of years down the road, and you can get a couple more years, then that debt falls off, and so we kind of get to a place where you get the capacity maybe to help them out again, or to help yourself out, uh, because that revenue gets freed up, or to the extent you don't get your borrowed money at the time, then, uh, once again, if you do start a capital projects fund, and you start small, let's say you start for fifty thousand bucks one year just to start funding it, if this debt falls off, you could move some of that revenue out of debt service into the capital projects fund, and so instead of paying for debt, you're basically building cash up to start paying cash for items, which means you don't call me, that's not good for my job, but that's fine. In the long run, that's better for y'all, it's better for the county, and I have a fiduciary duty to do what's in your best interest, and so that's what I'm talking about here tonight. Uh, so that's just an overview. Page ten summarizes, once again, all the county's debt, it's fixed rate. Uh, you have had some variable rate debt in the past, but we got, uh, delayed for that several years ago, we have not done even variable rate debt since then. That's not to say we won't come back and do something if you have a need in the future or interest rates are high, but the current interest rate environment, uh, just makes no sense. Uh, is, if you went back and looked and looked at all your debt, I was, I'm not exactly sure where we are, but like I said, three point two six is your highest cost of funds, zero is your lowest cost of funds, on average, you're probably a little bit less than two and a half percent, or something like that, two and a quarter percent is your total all-in cost of funds county-wide, you put everything together. And so that is not a bad place to be in the scheme of things, and your debt is fairly short, considering all the stuff that you financed over the years. Uh, your final payment, I think, is in two thousand twenty-eight, and that's only, uh, excuse me, thirty-nine, but, um, but a lot of that stuff is tied to, uh, capital equipment that's gonna last that long, and, um, it's, with your debt falling off here, not only, not only is it gonna fall off here, but it steps off again here, it steps off again here, and it keeps stepping down, so we're gonna, things will, it depends on what your capital needs are and, and all that. Um, you have the capacity to do more stuff if we keep moving forward, if you keep doing what you're doing, so. That's kind of an overview where we are. I'll be happy to take any questions or anything, anything y'all want to talk about.
Uh, just for the record, where people at home can hear, uh, what is our debt owed, uh, as far as combined debt?
Yeah, so, uh, that's on the total page, it is thirty-two million, seven hundred and four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars. Uh, and that is, is of, uh, June thirty, two thousand twenty-one, so that does not include payments you're getting ready to make here this month and next month or whatever, so those payments are already accounted for, so after, uh, June thirty this year, thirty-two point seven million is what you owe. That's about, that's about the cost of half a high school, think of it that way. You can't even get a full high school for thirty-two million, uh, dollars in today's market, so.
All right, thank you.
Anything else? Thank y'all for the time, and if you have any questions, let me know, uh, I'll be happy to come back anytime. Justin can reach out to the two of the mayor, and be happy to respond to anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
Next is a presentation of volunteer fire departments.
There's some here.
Just turn this thing here, we got Paris Perry calling Drummer, I think. They will come forward.
Well, again, we've kind of been here two or three times, and you guys, y'all are probably getting tired of this, but, again, we appreciate your support over the years. We met last week with, uh,
Nonprofit.
Okay, there you go. So we met with them, and we got some good, good results, good feedback, answered some good questions, so, uh, uh, as far as I'm concerned, we'd be glad to answer any questions, since I have, Phil's up here as well, probably, so Phil, same one. You know, I have some questions too, but, again, we appreciate your support over the years, for sure.
Well, I, I was asked to be here, uh, Raymond Roberts, president and chief of such occasion, and play as many of you asked to come up here. I, I didn't know really what we were supposed to do, but it kind of, kind of wanted to justify our existence a little bit, I think it's, it, it was kind of words that we was told, but, uh, the service that the county is getting, but provided by the volunteer fire departments, i- is, uh, I don't know if everybody realizes exactly what's going on. Each fire department out here has maintained over a half a million dollars worth of equipment, and that's each department. There's seven departments, so different figures to that, some of them are gonna be greater than that, that on, on the average, it's gonna be at least a half a million dollars worth of equipment. So that's not counting all the few on the man hours, and the training is mandated by the state of Tennessee anymore. Not just anybody can crawl in that fire truck and take off and start fighting fires, everybody is required to take the amount of training every year, it's a continual educational process that we have to go through with each individual firefighter, uh, firefighter that we have to maintain ISO ratings and, and things of that nature, which county, countywide, most of our areas are in a six, six Y, uh, ISO rating, which used to be a class nine, that we've dropped to six, six Y. Operating as mutual aid now departments, automatic mutual aid, that means we have just about tripled our workload of each department, because we can't get enough manpower to get out here and fight a fire, fight a fire with one department, so we're automatically mutual aid where there are naming on departments, which maintains about three times the normal cause that we, we would have been running on a normal average. So, I mean, we appreciate every donation that we get, we have to operate from a subscription basis, uh, so there is a couple municipalities that, uh, participate in each department, but we are figured appreciative of whatever the county can do for us. Of course, we respond every time there's a traffic. every time there's a traffic accident. Our fire department clearly went out yesterday. They were responding with the Warren County ambulance service. There's one in the northern Warren area today. So anytime that ambulance goes out for extrication, y'all, fire departments automatically with. Animals on county, favorite fire departments on the freeway. So I guess that's what I wanted to say. But here tonight, we do appreciate you having, but we always make money.
Yes, Commissioner Hilton.
While the fire departments are here, Executive Haley, I know we've been working with Canny Fork and stuff on, on some programs. Do we have an update with where we're at with that and, and while, while they're here present?
We've worked through logistics. Raymond Roberts has sat down with Canny Fork, multiple meetings. I haven't been present for those because I felt like that was the thing that the, that the fire departments in Canny Fork need to work out. They're both considered co-ops under state law. We thought we had everything worked out after an opinion from the attorney general's office, but with legal counsel and some definitions from the state. If it is a voluntary payment through Canny Fork, then we could enact it and it would be easily collected and the revenue would be there. Canny Fork, however, has done second thought on this, and they want it to be a mandatory fee that everybody pay for. And so either that or we'll have a fire tax. And so the, that is considered by the state of Tennessee, and Mr. Bratcher can allude to it as well, as a tax. And so the option of, of that funding is not necessarily dead. It's just, it's going to have to go back through the general assembly. It's a private act to allow those agreements to take place whether it's, where it's a mandatory payment. So that's where we are right now.
Any other questions?
Could you explain in a little bit more detail about the ISO rating for, for the fire departments and what that means to the citizens of Warren County as far as their insurance rates go, and how much additional training has to be involved in that in order for you to get a higher rating? Is it training? Is it equipment? Is it facility? And what we need to do to, to recognize what's all involved there and what we can do to help achieve a higher rating? Thank you.
The ISO rating is a combination of all the things you mentioned. The biggest problem that you have with the ISO rating is water availability, which is one reason we went to the automatic mutual aid in the, in the beginning, is to have a sustained water supply, water flow with the ISO rating, a camp for. The ISO ratings are used by the insurance companies to determine the cost of, of homeowners insurance. The city of McInville is currently a class three, a three, class three rating right now, whereas we're six and six Y. The biggest problem with that is water supply. We've done about everything we can do as far as training and equipment and things of that nature. And of course, you got to keep good records about it. That's like having a set of jobs. Everyone of these guys up there has been 12 months doing paperwork just to maintain that. But the biggest problem that we have with that is a water issue.
Is that through the availability of hydrants or the size of the tanker truck?
Both, all, all of those account into it. When you don't have the availability of hydrants and the reasons it's classified as a six or a six Y, if you're within 1,000 feet of the hydrant, then you're classified as a six. Otherwise, you're a six Y because you're not going to 1,000 foot of that fire hydrant. Of course, the amount of the water supply that we have as tanker trucks with automatic mutual aid, we reach that level that we, we can double flow.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, if I can also speak, and I've been working with utility districts as well. I'm trying to come up with a solution. A lot of times, it's water pressure. A lot of it's a four-H line that will accommodate a fire hydrant. And even if it's a larger pipe, six or eight inch, if the water pressure is not there, it really does no good. The fire hydrant will not function and a fuel station is required. And so we're hoping that some of the money coming out of Washington, I've been pushing for that with our relegation there. To earmark, much of this infrastructure for water improvements, which would be line of grades and fire hydrants and, and new tank facilities to increase pressure, particularly in areas of growth in rural communities where right now we're not able to accommodate new subdivisions in Centertown and many parts of the community because we do not have the water pressure and we don't have the lines available to accommodate that. And the costs have to be passed on to the utility subscribers. And so through, through, you know, cost benefit analysis, if there's not going to be enough revenue to generate, they're extending the line or upgrading it. And over a course of so many years, then it's not cost effective and the utility board cannot just sort of tissuely pass on those rates to every subscriber to pay for that. So it, it's a complicated measure, but we're hoping some of the ARP money, infrastructure, even with the portion that we're getting, can have sub recipients with utility districts. But we're also hoping the huge infrastructure bill come down to Washington, to earmark for roads and highways, taking sidewalks and infrastructure like sewer and, and water lines. So we're, we're working diligently.
Because all hydrants have got to flow over five or gallon of water. They're not there.
You're going to have to have a six-inch line minimum for that.
And water pressure.
Water pressure.
One of the quickest ways to benefit as far as water goes would be first, they have to be more high. First thing on the list, more hydrants. We need more hydrants. Because we have to get on the radio, ask dispatch. I mean, they're so, they're so far scattered apart right now that we actually have to ask them, where's the closest hydrant? The only ones that have, you know, where's, where's the hydrant at? We don't even, you know, there's so few of the fire departments. I mean, if we could start off just getting the water department to install some hydrants, let that be government number one out there, more hydrants. How many of them knows? Take a survey. It's, it'll vary in this year, but that would be a good first step, like their hydrants.
See, I'll just say that's my opinion. Keep putting pressure on that. That's what we're going to be trying sometimes. It's all about money, but we got to save lives.
That's true.
Like I mentioned to the board the other night, let's, I mean, we're fire departments, but let's don't forget our first responders. That's one thing we, we can overlook when we say fire department. We don't only have fire trucks, firefighters, we have first responders. They'll often have to get there before the ambulance, even leaving the van. And they're going to be equipped with ATs, their med bags, they've got to have license, they've got to go to school. I mean, the cost like Phil was talking about, the council, the minutes that, that are for us to keep, to keep them up and running. So like I said, we appreciate what y'all do. Don't think we don't. We really do. But we'll take more.
I guess, no, I don't think we need, but.
You need more.
We, we, we do. We, we need more. Commissioner Brown, we do, we do. Anything else?
At our nonprofit review meeting of the night, the amount of money that was given to each one of the fire departments just didn't cover all of them's insurance, but it was just for insurance. That was $10,000. So I wish there was more. And this is a prime example of why you need capital expenditure project funds allocated. And so it's something we really do need to look into. I do appreciate so much you coming up here tonight and talking. And I do have a question. All these fire hydrants, who services them?
Most of them are serviced by the utility district that they're in. Of course, you got West Warren Utility, Warren County Utility, Warren County Utility Services, all nine. It depends on the utility district that that hydrant is on. Of course, we as fire departments go out and flow those and flow test them at different times and have do maintenance on them within ourselves. But they're ultimately belong to the utility district for their maintenance. But I'm glad you touched on the insurance because most departments' insurance is running 11 to 12,000 dollars a year. Some are a little less, some are significantly more. But I mean, we can't operate without the insurance. I mean, we're in big enough liability as it is doing what we're doing, but not putting insurance on the trucks and liability issues that we've got there. And of course, so much do have a, a smaller amount of workman's comp on, on the volunteers just to, to protect their families after something, something goes bad or wrong. But our insurance costs are 11 to 12,000 dollars a year. I mean, most of us are operating on 50 to 75,000 dollar a year budgets.
20.
Of course, I mean, the call volumes is, is a lot different between those two budgets as well. But I mean, they need to be operating on 152,000 to $100 budget just as a volunteer partner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner.
I know it's getting late and I apologize, but I do want to say one thing. These fire departments, if we could, as commissioners somehow in our districts and our, to our constituents, tell them that they need to pay their dues. I live in the Collin River area, but I, me and Commissioner Ridley, we service not only Collin River, but also Harris Ferry Mountain. And I know, speaking with Donald, they have about a 45%, 48% ratio of people paying their dues. And Harris Ferry Mountain's about 35%. So when you put that percentage in, if everybody would pay their dues, if every homeowner would, they wouldn't necessarily have to stand there in front of us. And I don't know how we get that point across to the people in Warren County. Because, you know, they, I guarantee if their house catches on fire, they expect them to be there. I guarantee. But how we need to get and get that number in the 90% bracket or even 100% bracket. So that's something that I feel like for however we can do it, we need to focus on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank y'all. All right. Next is announcements. Executive Haley, Commissioner Hilton.
Well, just on the fire department, Biola Fire Department is putting on a tractor pull. They're going to do that this Saturday, Saturday night. Down in Biola, it's going to start at seven. Admission's going to be $10. And kids can get in for $5. And if they're under the age of five, they get in for free. So that starts at seven. So obviously, the reason that Biola's Fire Department is having a tractor pull is to raise money. We just talked about that.
Thank you.
Did you want to announce the Habitat Day?
Yeah, most of you, a lot of you have already worked at the Habitat House so far this year. But anybody that hasn't had a chance, June 26, 7:30 AM until we're done, we'll be having a work day there also for elected officials. The, you have a map in your pocket with the location, 44 Bellwood Drive. And I know Gary's going to help you buy some barbecue along with Crash and Daddy Memphis Church. And anybody that wants to help, you just show up. Executive Haley.
Yes, and I am working with UCHRA who is in possession of several lots across the city on gift codes to Habitat for building sites when I was not very far from the admin building. So we are working on that as well. So that'll, that'll help secure them a building spot for years, next couple of years. A couple of other things, I do have to spread across the minutes and make an announcement that there's been two appointees to the West Warren Biola Utility Board, and that's Connie Sissom, who was the nominee and appointee from Coffey County, and James Vicki Hillis from Warren County. So I want those entered into the minutes as well. A couple of announcements, I know Commissioner Lee talked about Preston Denny, so I've been in constant contact with him. His wife had been suffering some, some medical issues and was put on the transplant list. I did not know when that was coming. So they got the phone call early Sunday morning to head to Nashville. And so she had successful surgery. She got the ventilator now. They've got it up walking. Her vitals are strong. And so the, the operation took less than anticipated. So right now, there is great hope for her. So keep them in your prayers. Sent out that email as well. I did want to announce a couple of things. Bruce Boyd, who is the custodian for this building, is retiring. And so his last day will be June 18. And we will be having a small going away party for him here in the admin building. So we'd like to recognize his service to Warren County. Also a couple of other things. Our air station here, pump our tires up is used a lot by the community and it went down. And I want to thank Bridgetown again for paying for the, for the replacement of that air station here at the admin building. You don't realize how many people use it until it's torn up. And then you get multiple calls and people being frustrated about it. But it's up and running now. Greg, the maintenance department put that together as well. Another thing there next week is the Tennessee County Service Association Conference in Gatlinburg. And several of y'all will receive that and the road superintendent as well for possible attendance. But there'll be several sessions on ARP money. I sent in on a conference call zoom meeting today about it as well. So it's that, those numbers are basically revealed on how much we can actually spend in what categories. Infrastructure is still the biggest category that we can spend for. But we got some verification today that we can't put in reserve funds. We can't retire debt service with, we can't do any of those things. And so we've got to have some dollar projects. And some things under construction. We're going to have to have it completed by December 2024. As long as we have a lot of the money to approve the project, it can continue to December 31, 2026 to basically complete that project. So I'll be great giving some updates on that as well. So other than that, I don't, I did want to make sure that, you know, with, you know, with our overall sports program and recognizing CJ Taylor, we also had in the previous week, National Teachers Week, and shout out to them, and National Nurses Week as well. So I sent out that email and congratulated them, wished them well because we couldn't run this community without their service. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we just need to remember that our victims later make a book because of the.
Yes.
County Commission, maybe.
Yes. Everybody pay attention to the email and the website. All right. Motion to adjourn. We have a motion from Commissioner Hilton to adjourn.
I'll say.
A second from Commissioner Bell. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?